It's been a lot of work. A lot of people, there's a dog on the hay end. Oh god. A lot of people have come up to me tonight congratulating me saying this is a ton of work that I've done as the campaign manager. And I do want to say one thing that I've been thinking about a bunch lately. I'm gonna paraphrase a quote. Okay, a long time ago Isaac Newton said, "If I have seen further it's because I stood on the shoulders of giants."
That's right.
I want to say if we have seen further it is because we stood atop a human pyramid of dedicated DSA organizations. One hundred and fifty-two different people have put time and effort into making this a reality. And I just want to point that out, I want to give a huge thanks to Andy first of all. To Olivia for being comms director. And to John Voishman on our data team. You know I love you since French. Anyways, I'm not the person who's supposed to be speaking here. I was just asked to kick this off. Here is Alderman representing District Three on the Common Council, Alex Brown. For those of you that have been around DSA for a while, you know that we have struggled.
Yeah.
Okay, we have been through the struggle.
Yeah.
We've been around and around fighting and talking and talking about the right things. And finally tonight, the voters have said, "It's time for a change at City Hall!" Yes, seriously. This victory tonight, wow. I am just, this is incredible, I wish you all could see the perspective that I have right now of seeing all of your faces. Every single face I'm seeing is ready to act and ready to lead, am I right? We are sick. We are sick of the bullshit and we are sick of the aw shucks attitude from City Hall that can't do anything. Are we ready to change that? We're ready to bring complete transformation to the city of Milwaukee and make it better for every single person in this town. Not just, not just the people. Are we good? Yeah. Not just the people that live along the lake, right? We didn't do as well in those words, okay? Not just the people that live along the lake, not just the people that own businesses. Not just the, not just the job creators. Not just those people, but every single person because we know as socialists.
Yeah.
Okay? That's right, are we socialists here? Yes, we are, yes we are socialists. And then, then we have a victory of socialism over barbarism tonight. I almost lost my train of thought about how excited I am. Seriously, you guys, we have so much potential, what I was saying earlier about seeing things from my perspective. I'm looking out at a crowd right now that is completely ready to take on the work that we need to do. Not only to govern this district, but to govern the city of Milwaukee.
Let's take it back! The people's goal!
I was joking with some people in the campaign earlier today that this, this victory is just gonna unlock a bunch of opportunities for more work.
Yup.
No, no kidding, I mean seriously.
That's a reward, right?
Because if you, if you're sitting there, if y'all are sitting there thinking that I'm gonna be some like knight in shining armor that's gonna come around and save everything, you dead wrong. Okay, you're dead wrong. Because this victory, right, this victory belongs to every single one of you who all here volunteered for this campaign. You did too, honey. Give yourselves a round of applause. There's so much I've said, there's so much I've got to say tonight. Because it wasn't just tonight, it was all the months. Ever since they called this special election out of tragedy. We take it from tragedy, an opportunity for this city to reclaim its past glory and be a place where every single person is treated with dignity and respect and has a voice in this economy, am I right about that? That is socialism. That is socialism. Because we believe, you know, we're just, you know, some people confuse socialism, okay? Some people are a little confused by what socialism is. You know, they think that socialism is just maybe what's going on in Denmark or Sweden or something, right? Where they have a nice social safety net. Okay, but those countries, the Nordic countries, well, well better prepared than we are to have a social safety net, they are not socialist.
Yeah.
Okay, those countries still have capitalism. Okay, because the corporations still exist unfettered in their, in their drive for profits.
Yeah.
Okay, what we're advocating for, what we're advocating for is an economy that's completely devoid of the profit motive. Nothing short of that, nothing short of that, okay? We will banish the profit motive from the face of the earth. That's gonna end, and if we keep going the way we are, if we keep going the way we're going, it's gonna happen in our lifetimes, are you with me? Just seriously. Let's use our imaginations and imagine a better world, right? The conservatives and the moderates that we defeated tonight.
Yeah.
That completely lack imagination.
Yeah.
The way that we construct society is not some law of physics thing that nobody can violate, it's something that we all agree on. We all collectively agree on, so we can collectively agree to change it. We can collectively agree to change the order and power structures that happen in this country and in this world.
That's right, that's right!
Power structure in this world that honors every single human life where everybody reaches their full potential. And right now I can tell you that City Hall is not interested in that at all. No, they're not, no, they're not at all, no, they're not. So I am so excited again, seeing everybody here. Because like I said, if you think I'm just some knight in shining armor that's gonna ride down there and represent the third district, uh, down at, you know, on Water Street at City Hall, you're wrong, okay? Every single person that I'm seeing and more people, we're gonna need to get involved in our efforts, okay? So what you just did tonight, what you all did, and I might just be the face of it right now, okay? But what you all did tonight is unlock an opportunity for you all to step up and become the leaders that this world needs, are you ready? That was me, are you ready to step up? Yeah, I want all of you to be ready, okay? Because that's what organizing is. And as the organizer in chief of this district, that doesn't mean I'm the only organizer.
Nope. Not at all.
That doesn't mean I'm the only organizer. That means that I'm gonna continue my work as an educator and empower all of you in this position to become the leaders that neighborhoods and communities need, okay? That's what's gonna create the revolution that we want. Okay, and are you, are you guys, I mean, are you in for a revolution in this country? I think the people in the third district showed they're ready for a revolution. Seriously, we got up at these forums and we said things, and I said things at these forums that people in City Hall thought was completely insane, okay? And now a majority of District Three, where some of the, honestly, some of the wealthiest Milwaukeeans live, agreed with us tonight. So this is nothing short, this is nothing short of an affirmation, of a validation, of a stamp of approval from the voters. That every single aspect of the profit motive that exists in this country needs to be completely abolished and we're gonna start here in the third district. And we're gonna start, we're gonna start with city government in Milwaukee, okay? Because city government is honestly a complete failure right now.
Yeah.
And I, I did have a call earlier tonight, uh, just a few hours ago with Jose Perez, the president of the Common Council, he called to congratulate us. Yeah, our victory.
Alright.
Yeah, that was actually really cool, you know, because it was actually kind of funny because, you know, they've been ignoring every single thing that we're doing.
Yeah, right.
Here in this campaign, up until now they're forced, so in this election, right? We set the tone in this election, right?
Yup.
We set the tone. Our opponent was in a complete state of reaction to what we were saying and to what we were doing. Yeah, it was a complete state of reaction. And our, um, and City Hall and the media was forced to reckon with what we're doing. And just as a side note, some of you know, okay, that we've been trying for years to get Milwaukee's favorites on, in that publication, the Journal Sentinel. What were you thinking about that by the way? We've been trying for years, we've been trying for years to get the Journal Sentinel to cover the Power of the People campaign, which is calling for We Energies to be replaced. I mean, that's a good thing to say, right? Yeah, we've been calling for years for them to even cover it. And by running in this election, we forced them to write an article about our campaign. And now compared to tonight's victory though, that's almost nothing compared to tonight's victory. Because we're gonna force them to reckon with the fact that Milwaukee wants socialism. And that's not even the Journal Sentinel, right, because they're just a divided on paper, right? But seriously, nobody reads that anymore. Yeah, paywall, the F, yeah, no, 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 so what we're gonna do too additionally is force everyone in a position of power at City Hall to reckon with the idea that regular Milwaukeeans are sick of business as usual.
Yeah!
They are sick of the profit motive and they are sick of capitalism. Do you know what they want? They want socialism, am I right? People in Milwaukee want socialism. Yeah, seriously. And if a special election for Common Council were held in any other district, tonight, we would have won there as well. This country is ready, this city is ready, and are you ready to bring socialism to Milwaukee? I see it in all of your faces, I see it in all of your faces. So what I need every single one of you to do, you've already stepped up so much in this campaign, my god, how you've stepped up. Seriously, like there's, okay, so this is far as stats, I mean, Jesse, you might have to help me with some of these stats here, but we had, I know, yeah. Yeah, pull the sheet here, we had one hundred and fifty-one unique volunteers in this campaign. We had over, what, six hundred and fifty donors? We had over six hundred unique donors! Don't even average of twenty dollars each. Okay, we were the people powered movement, so City Hall is gonna be forced to reckon with all of this. And what you all are gonna do is continue the leadership that you've already demonstrated in this campaign. While I am in office at City Hall representing the third district, it is time, it's time you all, for us to become the governing body in this city, are you ready? You guys are aware, maybe, maybe some of you are aware, maybe some of you aren't, but in 2028, every single position at City Hall is up, and including this one, every single one is up. So we are not only gonna need to muster good governance for District Three, which I have complete faith that we can do that. We're gonna need to muster good governance, governance, excuse me, and a vision for the entire city of Milwaukee so that in 2028, we can sweep City Hall! Now, boys, now, boys, and every single one of you to stretch yourself because it's uncomfortable, okay? John Kennedy said, and I don't normally quote mainstream liberals like Kennedy, but I do like this, okay, I do like this. And he said that we're gonna go to the moon, not because it is easy, but because it is hard. Okay, so I need all of you to become the strong people that you are destined to become so that we can actually take this city back.
That's right.
Yeah, seriously, thank you, give everybody applause for that. I'm gonna wrap up my comments here in a second with the Common Council, which I just absolutely adore. I'm gonna wrap up my comments here in a second, but not only are we gonna take this city back, we're gonna take, based on the other results of the elections tonight, we're gonna take the state of Wisconsin back.
Well, let the working class!
That's right, that's right, the working class will run this state. And after worker currently, when we take this state, we're gonna take the United States for the people! The worker, the Wall Street sit on the throne in New York, but the worker will sit on the throne in Congress! And you will be, you will be comrades, when we've taken this country for working people, okay? And we can start, along with other comrades all across the country, we can start right here in District Three.
Yeah.
So not only are we gonna accomplish and work to accomplish as a collective all the stuff we talked about this campaign, I just want to bring up, including some really cool, I mean, we even talked about some really awesome stuff by the way. Not only have we talked about making this city safer by getting to the root causes of crime, not by pumping more money to the police departments, right? What do we, what do we think about cops and what they're doing to the job?
Fuck 12! Fuck 12!
Fuck the fags!
Yeah, they're not doing their job in this city and they're not keeping us safe, we need alternatives, we need to get to their roots, right? Yeah, seriously, you're gonna be working on that while I'm in the council with your help, okay? We're also talking about standing with city workers, I know we have, some members have asked me in the house, "Thank you for working for the city." Now, we're also talking about having housing for people over profits. While we're still exploring what we can do as far as development and how much we can actually manipulate what's going on, I'm gonna tell you that in every single conversation that I'm in, I'm gonna want comrades with me and we're gonna be questioning every single developer in this district. Questioning, questioning that demand that we have affordable housing in the city of Milwaukee and also expanding our city's housing authority after we redevelop it. Seriously, 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 right? We're also gonna be fighting for public schools. I cannot wait, I cannot wait for help from my sisters and brothers at the union that endorsed us, the MTA. I cannot wait, I cannot wait to repeal, I believe it's chapter three hundred, um, to repeal chapter three hundred of the Code of Ordinances, which allows the city to charter schools. We're gonna get rid of that law, we're gonna cease the city chartering more schools! And last but not least, last but certainly not least, we have our sights on the biggest, baddest monopoly man in town, We Energies! For every single person in this city, for every single human soul who has suffered every month, every single month. Paying a gracious utility bill, this, it is, this victory is for you! This victory is for you, okay? Because we are not gonna yield a single inch to the utility, in fact, we're gonna take, Brown, and we're gonna take 'em over! And seriously, we said we were gonna do it, the Journal Sentinel made fun of us for talking about it, and then we still won! For city people, we have defeated them! We Energies holds no court in the city of Milwaukee, and we're gonna use chapter one ninety-seven, maybe chapter one ninety-eight, maybe the parts of chapter sixty-six, all the statutes and the state's constitution that give us the right to seize their assets with compensation and operate it as a municipal utility, are we ready? I'm really proud, I'm really proud of our tradition in this city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A tradition of socialism in Milwaukee.
That's right!
That's right! That's right!
That's right, and so tonight's victory.
It happened here!
In River West. Tonight's victory brings back to the Common Council, since nineteen forty-eight by the way, if I can raise attention in the room, that'd be super, brings back to Milwaukee the tradition of sewer socialism. Sewer socialism has returned to City Hall! I'm really proud, I'm really proud to be the first socialist member of the council since nineteen forty-eight.
That's right!
Now we have to get a socialist mayor in there!
That's right! That's right! Let's go! Let's go! Let's go!
So, I wanna, I wanna bring up this tradition so proudly, okay? Because we are walking in instead, Emile Sidel, who was the first socialist mayor of Milwaukee, I just wanna read a quote from him, I got a couple quotes and then we're gonna wrap up here, okay?
Alright.
Emile Sidel said, he said this when he was mayor, he said, he said this, let me just, yeah, pause it a bit here, he said, "Some eastern smarties..." Of course, this is like nineteen hundred and twelve, okay, so just bear with us for a second. He said, "Some eastern smarties call ours a sewer socialism. Yes, we wanted sewers in the workers' homes, but we wanted much, oh, much, very more than sewers. We wanted our workers to have pure air, we wanted them to have sunshine, we wanted plant homes, we wanted living wages." We wanted recreation for young and old, we wanted vocational education, we wanted a chance for every human being to be strong and live a life of happiness. And we wanted everything that was necessary to give them that, playgrounds, parks, lakes, beaches, clean creeks and rivers, swimming and wading pools, social centers, reading rooms, clean fun, music, dance, song, and joy for all. This was our Milwaukee socialist movement! So again, this election is not owned by me, although I'll be proud to be the one holding the seat and have my name up there, and that is such an honor that you have all bestowed on me. But that's not the real deal, it's the movement that we've built, it's what we've created, and it's an opportunity for all of you. And I'm seriously saying, do not leave me hanging, okay? I want to be calling all of you, you all have to step up, are you ready? I know I said that like four or five times before, but I'm really trying to emphasize, okay, this is my teacher coming out.
Yeah, right?
I just want to leave you all with a quote that I think really sums up what we're dealing with here right now, okay? And this quote comes from a speech given by a famous socialist named Eugene Debs, if you don't know, you don't know. So in case you, in case you don't know, Eugene Debs led railroad workers on a strike, and then a federal court said, "Oh, you can't do that." And then he wiped his ass with the injunction. And then they did send a prison parole in for that.
Yeah. And then, then he ran for prison anyway.
He said, and then they said, "An unjust law is meant to be broken," right?
That's right! That's right!
A law that says that any worker can't go on strike is inherently unjust. But so then Eugene Debs, later on, he was tried for opposing World War One. Obviously a violation of First Amendment, but in his defense, he said, Eugene Debs said this, he said, "Your honor, years ago I recognized my kinship with all living beings, and I made in my mind that I was not one bit better than the meanest on earth.
That's right.
I said then and I say now, that while there is a lower class, I am of it.
That's right!
And while there is a criminal element, I am of it. And while, and while there is a soul in prison, I am not free! If you're dumb as a rood, are you with me? I mean, will you not only follow, believe yourself? Thank you so much, Congress, thank you for this victory, let's celebrate tonight!
Let's go!